Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, August 16, 2022. Commissioners Court is meeting in this joint meeting with the El Paso County Hospital District Board of Managers.
Good afternoon. The El Paso County Hospital District Board of Managers is meeting jointly with our El Paso County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, August 16, 2022, and the time is 1:06 PM.
Rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... by the United States of America and to the public for which it stands on the nation of honor.
Item number three is public comment. At the time we have nobody signed up for regular public comment, we'll take action on the other items. Item number four from our regular agenda, receive a presentation on the El Paso County Hospital District Fiscal Year 2023 Operating and Capital Budgets. And item number five, discuss and take appropriate action on the El Paso County Hospital District's capital and operating budgets for fiscal year 2023 and proposed tax rate.
Yes, we do. Mr. Chair and Mr. Navah with Commissioners Court will introduce them at the appropriate time. And just for the record, we do have a quorum physically present.
Thank you, ma'am.
May I read our items?
Yeah, if you would, let's move to the irregular agenda.
Okay. So our items on our regular agenda are first is discuss and take appropriate action regarding the fiscal year 2023 El Paso County Hospital District operating and capital budget. And item number two, district, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District. Both will be presented by Mr. R. Jacob Sinthron, President and CEO, Mr. Michael Nunez, District Chief Financial Officer.
All right, I'm sure it's been read in, sir.
Okay. Well, welcome, all of you. Thank you for being here today. As you well know, it's a very important topic, and we'll be hearing, one of the things a commitment we made is to get the public to know more about UMC and some of the things that they're trying to accomplish, leading into a possible certificate of obligation or going into general election. So Jacob, thank you and all your team for being here, and I know you have to do a lot of preparation, but we thank you all for being here today.
Thank you. Jacob Sinthron, President and CEO for the El Paso County Hospital Districts. Thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for allowing us this second joint session for our budget. Michael has prepared a much shorter presentation as a recap of what we discussed the last meeting we were here. And so I'd like to pass it along then to Michael. And then I believe we have representatives from the SEIU to, you know, talk about the budget we discussed with them as well.
Excellent. You're very welcome. Thank you.
Good afternoon, county judge commissioners. My name is Michael Nunez, El Paso County Hospital District, District Chief Financial Officer. So with us today in terms of to start off our second budget work session, as Jacob mentioned, I'm going to just go through a briefer presentation. It's about five or six slides that just encompasses the highlights of the proposed 2023 operating and capital budget. On the, oh, this is the, this is the previous one. Okay. So first off, on the, on the first slide, this is just a five-year historical look back in terms of the hospital districts operating a budget. You can see back in 2019 was around 800,000 and how that's grown now where we expect to end up in 2022 and then also for 2023, just right about 1.2 billion in both operating revenues and operating expenses. In terms of the actual net position change, going to the furthest right, which is our proposed 2023 operating budget, this budget does reflect operating revenues in excess of operating expenses by about $9 million currently right now for 2022. The proposed budget for 2022 was about $11 million, and we are forecasting right now to come in a little bit better than that to arrive at about $16 million for fiscal year 2022 that ends September 30 of 2022. In looking at the 2023 proposed operating budget, the pie chart on the left will show the operating revenues, which is just a little bit north of 1.2 billion. Net patient service revenue is about 45%, and that makes up about 547 million. Premium revenue, which is El Paso Health's revenue that they receive from Health and Human Services for their Medicaid members, about 288 million or 24%. Medicaid supplemental revenue, 119 million or 10%. Property tax revenue, 133 million, about 11%. And then other revenues of 118 million, 10%. The pie on the right is our expense budget, which is a little bit south of 1.2 billion. You'll see the largest amounts are going to be working from right to left. As you'll see, salaries and wages, 338 million at 28%. Employee benefits at 71 million, 6%. Then medical claims, supplies, pharmaceuticals, and physician fees and purchase services make up the other larger expense components of the operating expense budget. We do have other operating expenses, and then depreciation. Depreciation, although it is reflected as an operating expense, it is a non-cash expense item, and that's about 42 million for the hospital district in 2023. The next slide, which I was showing in terms of looking at our 2023 tax rate scenarios, and going left to right, last year, when we adopted the 2022 budget, property tax values were about 46.7 billion. The final numbers that came out just towards the end of July of 2023 came out about 49.7 billion dollars. The main difference for this is the nine months that happens from last July to now in terms of the property values that were under protest that actually did, that were actually settled, and then also the lawsuits, you know, throughout the year. That's why it was a 49.7 billion. When you look at the 2023 tax rate scenarios, I'll emphasize the no new revenue tax rate, although we do have the other two scenarios. If the hospital district maintained the current tax rate, that is in the middle column, and then the voter approval rate, which is the one on the right, the total taxable value is 56.5 billion. Now, this number right here does include both the residential and also commercial property values. You'll see that the taxable value of the existing properties that were on the roll last year were about 55.1 billion. And then taxable values of new properties and improvements ended up being about 1.3 billion that were added to this year's tax roll. The actual dollar increase, the property tax value is about 6.7 billion, or about 13% total. Looking at the total tax rate in terms of the, what the hospital district is proposing is called a no new revenue rate. So what this means is that the hospital district will receive no additional dollars other than for new properties and new improvements, we will receive the same dollar value as we did in 2022. So with that, the total tax rate would be 0.235153, which is made up of the maintenance and operations portion of 0.193259, and the interest and debt service at 0.041894. The expected property tax revenue of the, is right under 133 million with maintenance and operations right at 109 million, and the interest and debt service for the three current bond obligations we have to be at 23.6 million. The total variance is going to be right around 4.3 million from last year with 3.1 million of that coming from new properties and improvements, and then 1.2 million from current property values. Now, looking down in terms of the average net taxable value, now this is different than the average market value. On average, throughout the county, their taxable value is about 84, 85% of the appraised market value. You'll see that the average net taxable value, the final number for 2022 that just came out was about 150,000, and it has increased up to about 168,000. So based upon a home value of 168,195, the annual property taxes due will be about $395.52 compared to last year was $388.30. So that has an increase of about $7.21. I did have a discussion earlier today with David Stone from the Central Appraisal District, and to answer one of the questions we've been trying to figure out, in terms of average to average, why is it that the $7.21 does exist? You know, he did mention that, okay, there's a lot of variables to this calculation. First off, when you look at the residential portion of the total of the 56.5 billion, that's roughly 60, about two-thirds of the value with the commercial being one-third. But the other component, which is, which really makes this calculation, is that residential values increased about 13% whereas commercial values only increased about 9%. There you go. So with that variable alone, that explains when we're looking at the number down below, as to when you're looking at average taxable value of last year versus this year, even though that we are adopting the no new revenue rate, because residential values increased higher than commercial values, that's why on an average basis, it's $7.21 more. So that was, so that was a further clarification based upon the information when I spoke with the Central Appraisal District earlier today.
I think, Michael, too, the 722 includes the, not only the existing homes, but new properties. So from the, if you just look at a proration of the dollar amount, about 28% of that 722 is for existing properties that either came out of disputes, settled lawsuits, had refunds, or claimed a variety of exemptions. They said there's about 20 different items that they look at that go into factoring what their appraised value rate's going to be, so.
The next slide is looking, I took the liberty of going back to 2014, the last 10 years, and just looking at the overall property tax rate history for the hospital district. Back in 2014, we had a total of 21.4 cents, which is made up of 16.7 cents for maintenance operations and about 4.7 cents for debt service. You can see as to how that increased all the way up to 2020, stayed level in 2021, and then the last two years in 2022, when we also adopted the no new revenue rate, there was a decrease of one penny. And then now in 2023, we're also adopting the no new revenue rate, which is a decrease of about 2.3 cents as well, too. The last item I wanted just to highlight was our, the proposed routine capital budget for UMC is about $25 million a year. El Paso Children, 6.5 million. El Paso Health, about 1.4 million, for a total of about $32.9 million. So that is a brief recap in terms of the detailed discussion we had two weeks ago, just to reiterate what the, what the main items are for the hospitals districts 2023 operating and routine capital budget. With that, I'll turn it over to the court.
Any questions?
Just to, just to clarify here, if we're looking at our budget rate of .235, that would be, I guess, equal or pretty close to the same rate that we had in 2017.
That is correct, yes.
So we effectively are back to 2017.
Yes.
Because back in 2017, the overall rate was 23.4 cents. For 2023, it's going to be 23.5 cents.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? No? Is there still? No. Thank you, Michael.
Judge, would you like to take public comment at this time?
Yes, sir.
We have Kathy Martinez that would like to speak.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you.
Good afternoon.
I want to take this opportunity to speak today. My name is Catalina Martinez, and I'm the Healthcare Director for SEIU Texas. I want to thank you for all your community work you have done and how you support the community here in El Paso. I'm here to speak in support of the wage increases in the budget for UMC, in particular the increase to increase the minimum wage of $14 an hour. I'm sure that everyone here today joins me with the admiration of the hard work and the dedication that the healthcare workers have shown during the crisis and during the pandemic here in El Paso. They were there for us, helping us, helping our families, supporting us, and I think it's time for us to increase our minimum wage and continue increasing. While I'm heartened to see that the raise, the minimum wage is still at 14 for workers, especially healthcare workers, I wanted to, I don't want to lose sight of our goal still to increase minimum to 15. That being said, the raise in pay for 14 would put money in people's pockets of some of the lowest-paying workers here in El Paso. And at the time, we're prices and inflation is increasing. It's becoming more and more difficult for our community, our healthcare workers and other workers here to live, to make a living here in El Paso and make ends meet. I'm not, this is not 15 what we'd like to see, but it's a step into that direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have our item number five, Judge, discuss and take appropriate action on the El Paso County Hospital District's capital and operating budgets for fiscal year 2023 and proposed tax rate.
And no more public comments, sir?
No, sir. We do not have public comment either online or from either side, right?
Hi, me or anybody? Mr. Bates, any? Are you guys okay? Thank you. Read the motion.
Judge, you have a proposed motion, and you can go ahead and read it now if you so wish. Thank you.
Propose a property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District doing business as University Medical Center of El Paso in the amount of 0.235153 per 100 assessed valuation, consisting of 0.193259 per 100 assessed valuation, 0.041894 per 100 assessed valuation for payment of the principal and interest of the debt of the hospital district. The proposed tax rate does not exceed the lower of the no new revenue or voter approval tax rate. Further, schedule and publish notice of a meeting to vote on the proposed tax rate to be held on Monday, August 29, 2022, at 5:30 PM in the Commissioners Court Chambers, Third Floor, Room 303, El Paso County Courthouse, 500 East San Antonio Avenue. Please note that the public has two options into which to participate in the meeting. Members of the public may attend in person at the El Paso County Courthouse, as noted earlier, or members of the public may participate and address a government body via telephone to participate in the meeting. Please call 888-835-7276 or 888-ELPASO. Agendas will continue to be posted online at www.elpasocounty.com. To watch online, please visit www.epecounty.com/video or on YouTube by searching County of El Paso, Texas Commissioners Court, Public Hearings.
That is your motion, Judge. That's a motion by Judge Samaniego and a second by Commissioner Leon. Commissioner Olgin?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stoudt?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries.
For the record, there'll be no action for the UMC Board of Managers. The Board of Managers has already approved the proposed tax rate to the court as well as the proposed budget pending the outcome of this hearing, and they've already taken action on that.
Thank you.
That completes all the items on our agenda, Judge.
Okay. Well, thank you all for being here. Appreciate everything, and this is on behalf of the Commissioners and myself. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Mr. Chair, this does conclude our business as well. May we have a motion to adjourn?
We have a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. The joint meeting between the El Paso Board of Managers and El Paso County Commissioners is officially adjourned. The time is 1:26 PM. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
This concludes today's meeting of the El Paso County Commissioners Court. It's 1:26 PM. Meeting adjourned.